Final order of the Kearney School District Board of Education, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, first of all, we have approval of the agenda.
Move to amend the agenda.
Do you want me to second that, or are you going to do the removal? Second.
Dr. Mo is going to speak to it for a second.
So, administration has made a number of changes, especially in light of our, a lot of our salary and compensation changes. And one of the things that we would like to do is make one more pass through the handbooks, and then bring that back to the special meeting next week.
So essentially, for those who don't know what 4D means in the audience, we're just removing an item from the agenda, and I'm going to talk about it later, so. All right, all in favor? Opposed?
So then, do I need to make that second motion? Okay, so move to remove, move to remove item 4E, approval of student and parent handbook from the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
That'd be seven.
Seven.
Yes.
Seven, not four.
Sorry.
It's my bad.
I was reading on the wrong agenda, so that's my bad.
Okay, now. We are good for public comment? We have no public comment? We have no public comment this evening? So we'll move right on to recognitions. And first, we have the girls' track team, Coach Hutton.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Coach Remley and the baseball team for a fantastic season. What a finish. Finished third in state. And, once again, shining light on Kearney with another sport. We have six girls that earn All-State honors this year. I can't say that, you know, express how proud I am. The girls have told me all, or I told them all season long, that there were fewer of us this year. A lot more girls had to carry a load. And honestly, I think maybe in all the years I've coached, this is one group of girls that maybe overachieved every week. And as a coach, you can't, you can't sit back and not recognize what they did, you know? Tonight, we have one young lady here. Every track meet she went to until the end of the season, she was carrying four events for her team. And she wasn't the only one, there were a lot of them. That helps us down the road, you know, next year, when we didn't graduate a whole lot of them, they're going to come back. But the pride I felt when they hosted a district trophy, the pride I felt when the ones that just really worked, and worked, and earned their All-State honors, and had those medals, just meant so much to me, because I knew what they were doing every week. I knew how hard it was, and, you know, this group of girls probably can stand right along with any one of them that says they are proof that hard work will be rewarded somewhere. And Caitlin will be the first to tell you, we don't know when, but we know hard work is going to get rewarded somewhere. So our All-State girls tonight, I know Caitlin doesn't want to come up here and be by herself, so I'll read you off last then, okay? Olivia Brock, Daisy Burnham, Lila Murphy, Jordan Vaughn, and Anna Williams. And Caitlin Wood is with us tonight. They, Caitlin earned all honors in the four-by-eight relay. She was also there in the 800. She was also there in the 800 and the four-by-four. She qualified for the 400 in the sectional. We decided maybe four events during that might be a little bit much, so she dropped the 400 to focus on the eight, and she made it through. And actually, her time in the 800 was your season's and personal best, wasn't it, that day? So, one of the many who is proof that hard work is going to pay off somewhere. And, you know, Caitlin has hung with me since she's been in track at Morgan. She doesn't know another coach, but she also knows that if we're going to accomplish something, it starts early, and it's not going to be easy there. So, I think next year Caitlin and these other girls probably are going to have another state track meet to be proud of, and I'm really looking forward to that season with them. Congratulations.
I want to thank you, thank you guys for having us today, and to honor this team. And like Coach Hutton said, there's a lot of other sports teams this spring that had great seasons, and all of us should be happy that, and be, make Kearney proud with what they did this year. I'm going to talk about the baseball team. Last year, we made it to the quarterfinal and didn't make it past that. This year, the kids had a mission and goal. They were conference champs, 6-0. And we ran into the district tournament with the number-one seed, and only gave up three runs while scoring 38 ourselves. Then we had, we hosted the quarterfinal, which was an amazing setting. It took a village to, from the maintenance guys to the community to come out. We had an awesome crowd for that Web City quarterfinal. We hadn't hosted one of those since 98. And we beat Web City Revenge, our loss last year, 5-0. And then we went to the final four, which was the first one since 98. We lost a close one to Webster Grove, 5-7. And then the kids bounced back and beat Fort Zonewalt South, 1-0. It was a great group of great run this year. The kids all, we had 13 seniors, and they all bonded together, and it was awesome. Through the playoff run, several of them kept saying, "I want to keep practicing, I want to keep practicing, I don't want to give this up." So, some fun facts, or I guess to end, we had 30, 30 wins, which is a school record for wins. The other record was 25, so we finished the year 30-8, which was a pretty good, we had a pretty good year. Some fun statistics, fun facts. Our batting average was 335, we had 339 hits. We scored 302 runs, but only gave up 120. We stole 160 bases, only got caught 13 times. We only gave up 39 stolen bases. Our team ERA was 2.565, which was awesome. We only gave up 9, 91 earned runs. Our fielding percentage was 951, we turned 22 double plays. So statistically, it was an awesome year, they had a great group of kids. Three of them have been, played every inning of our season, they were freshmen. And there's several other three or two-year starters. We had several guys that this was their first year, and several role players that came up big, that maybe weren't playing early in the year, but they came through big in different situations. So I'm very proud of that. And one of the things I'm also proud of is, we, as the Baseball Coaches Association of Missouri, we do an academic All-State. We had the highest team in class, the highest team GPA in Class V with an average of 3.65, which was awesome. And we had 12 kids receive academic All-State honors. The all-conference honors came out. We had first teamer Carson Shear, Jack Helberg, Chase Porter, Manny Lindtke, Eli Helberg. Second team was Cameron Webster, Bryce Page, Garrett Hodge, Bryson Morrison, and the honorable mention were Rooney, Casey Rooney, Camp Cunningham, Cameron Taylor, and then the conference player of the year was Carson Shear. And then some All-State honors we had. First-team All-State was Eli Helberg, is a pitcher, it's a two-time All-State pitcher. Manny Lindtke, a two-time All-State infielder. Jack Helberg, two-time All-State catcher. Chase now, Chase Porter is now a three-time All-State outfielder. And Shear, Carson Shear made All-State infield this year. And then honorable mention were Bryson Morrison and Bryce Page. We had the 13 seniors, five of them are going on to play baseball, four are going to play football, and the rest have some career goals, some are going to go be engineers, architects. One guy's going to go be a real estate agent. But they all have a plan, and my goal is to help them become good humans after they leave the program. But then, I just want to finish with this. I want to thank the school and community for getting behind us this year. It was awesome, the support we had. Every home game was packed, and our away game was packed. If you guys were at the district championship game, the whole stands was packed at Creekside. And I want to thank all the players and coaches and parents that put in the hours, the time, to make it. It was a fun ride, I know we didn't make it to our ultimate goal, but third place is pretty darn good. And I think we had a really good season, and I just thank everybody for all the support. And it was a great season, and these guys put in all the hard work. So, thank you guys for having us. The ones that are here. Trent Dosel. You're going to get your, go up there and get yourself a kit.
And then stay up here.
Still coaching.
Eli.
Is it Helberg?
Eli. Eli Helberg. I have him listed in numeric order, there in alphabetical order. Jack Helberg.
Garrett Hodge.
Garrett Hodge.
Maynard.
Maynard.
Tyler.
Tyler Maynard.
Cameron.
Cameron Webster, and Joe Yetter. Lots of the other guys, I know there's 28 kids on the team. Lots of them are playing today, or different things for the summer, so we're glad to get these seven to come say hi to us.
We had a great year in sports.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coach Hutton. Thanks for coming, Coach.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Yes, thank you.
He's a good guy.
Thanks, Coach.
You all messed up now.
All right, next we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Bailey. You know, it's just so impressive to see the caliber of students play this deep into the season. You know, next month, we're fortunate to also have a boys' track come to us. So again, just an impressive show from our students, and that just speaks volumes about my support. So, you know, my comments tonight are pretty brief. I will say, you know, often, we, we get questions, so, "What do you do at the district office this time of year?" So, I can tell you, we kind of shift gears. The work is just as busy, it's just different. We don't live with the day-to-day urgent, but now is our time for deep, meaningful planning. Last week, we kicked that off with our district leadership and our retreat. And we were really fortunate to have Mike Rutherford come in and join us. It was a full day of great learning. And one of the nice things about Mike coming in is that, from a professional development standpoint, what we're aiming for is congruence. What we want our administrators to learn and embed in their practice will be followed up with teachers in the fall. And so it's the importance of, one, making sure we're clear with expectations. Two, making sure that we're looking at kids and understanding our instructional strategies, and making sure we have good, sound practices. Making sure that we, as administrators, are giving good feedback. And most importantly, one of the things that he reminded of us, that it was, it's incredibly important for us to look for strengths in our teachers, and reinforce the positive things that they're currently doing, and double-downing on what they're doing well in the classroom. And that's how we build and see that flywheel of success. So, it was a great day of learning, looking for that reinforcement in the fall. So, again, this is our deep planning time, but just wanted to give you a brief update on that.
Hopefully, a little, little vacation time in there somewhere, I hope. Okay, next we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? All right. Information items? Financials?
The information in your packet is Representative May. Next week, we'll have the finalization for this fiscal year's numbers.
Any questions?
And just for those, for information that might be watching, we do have another board meeting next week to approve the final numbers from, from this year. We wait till the very end of the, of the year, so that we get it all cleaned up, right, Ginger?
Do our best.
Okay.
All right, bond project update. Ben?
Good evening, everybody. So, a lot of action happening at the schools right now. So, first picture you'll see, this is the addition at Southview. So, we've gotten the extension that was at the front door, that we couldn't really attack during school. We had to get kids in and out, so that addition's all framed in, steel is set now. And then, the part on the left side with the color on it, that's the waterproofing, and some of the cast stone that's sitting at the bottom of that. So it's all dried in, we're working in the inside, things are going just how they should be there. Let's go to the next picture. Yeah, here's kind of the canopy framing that just got set this week. So that's all tracking very, very well. Next picture. Okay, this is a picture of the kitchen hood that got set this week on the inside, so replacing that. And then, you know, the big task we had in Southview was replacing all the air handlers. So there's 19 of them. 16 of them have been replaced, so we're tracking ahead of schedule there. So they're set in place, now the controls, contractor's working, getting everything hooked up. And then, the plan will be to start filling the system again, and hopefully have some of those units on next week. So, we're probably a week and a half to two weeks ahead of our plan for that, so that's really good. In the meantime, we've got temporary cooling, getting pumped in the building, just so everything stays to temperature while the whole system's down. But that was the, that was the big worry this summer, was just getting all those units replaced, and it's going very well so far. So, let's see what else we got picture-wise. This is the demolished area, so after the administration moved out at the end of school, we tore down walls, cut in new plumbing trenches, got those poured back. So, we should be set up really good to have all that open back up for the school year. And let's go to the next one. Then, switch gears to the middle school. We are in, I don't know, seven or eight classrooms, we're replacing the air handlers in there. So, what you see in the picture, we had to tear out everything kind of on the left side, and then at the far end is the new mechanical closet, so it's framed in, getting close to drywall. We've got, all the equipment has been set on the roof, so now we're just setting the units inside those rooms. But yeah, shouldn't have any problem buttoning that up in time for school, too. And then, a couple of other things going on. At the junior high, this is, we had to fix one of those foundations again. So, this is on the south side. We're putting helical piles in there, those should be done by the end of the week. Haven't run into any roadblocks there, everything's tracking good, so we'll get landscaping put back in after those are done. And then, that's all the current work that we're doing. We've got the three other elementary schools that were out to bid right now for the first package. We're going to kind of do a two-package thing there. Earthwork and site utilities is out on the street for bidders right now. Hope to bring those in for approval next meeting. The idea, we're kind of doing a two-package thing, because there's a few things at Kearney Elementary we'd like to do this summer still, because there's a utility crossing, and some things that'll be tougher to do once school starts. So if we could bring those in early and get those approved in July, that would allow us a little time to maybe do a few of those things. We could do, during, do them during school, but it would just be more intrusive. So, the rest of the scopes associated with those schools, we're supposed to get drawings maybe this week for those, and we'll put those out to bid, but we probably won't be able to make the July board approval, just because of timing there. But we'll bring those into August. So, the, the big idea on those schools is kind of start work September, late September, build the additions over the school year, and then go in and do the renovations next summer, and then you got everything done for next school year. So, everything's tracking how it's supposed to be right now. Any questions for me?
Southview's pretty amazing. I walk by that every day, and I look at it all the time, and I'm like, wow. I like the look of it, I think it's going to turn out really nice.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's going to look nice, it's going to be good.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Okay, we have a program evaluation, parent, family, and community involvement. It's a written report. Any questions? All right. Next, we have action items. First one being approval of agreement with summit behavior.
Move to approve the agreement with summit behavior as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next, everybody's salary schedules.
Move to approve the 2024, 2025 extra-duty and miscellaneous salary schedules, and the revised classified salary schedule as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have approval of the 2025 budget, fiscal year 2025 budget.
Move to approve the budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025 as presented.
Second.
I'd just like to add, want to thank Ginger for all her great work on the budget. Ray Wykel also did a lot of great work in helping prepare this document. We are hoping that this budget will be a useful tool for our patrons to go in and review. We've tried to provide in our budget message a little more historical information regarding Missouri State Foundation formula, one that went into effect, and how that impacts our school district. We also tried to include some historical information regarding KSD's levies, and the impact that that's had over a number of years. Again, I think some of the work that we've done this year, you can see, we're really poised to present a budget that meets that forecast, that is within the board-approved threshold of 17% to 25%. The forecast anticipates will end above 18%. Again, if you look at our historical patterns, we tend to improve that over the course of the year. Some work that Ginger and I plan to do over the summer is really look at a multi-year variance report. If you go to page 15 and 16 of the document, and I think that's, that's right there. You know, good fiscal stewards, what they do is, you under-anticipate revenue, and you over-anticipate expenditure. That gives you a sense of all those decisions on those two pages where that, that occurs. And that, that really contributes to what the overall variance is. But what we're going to try to do is get a handle on if, if there's areas where we can tighten up to improve our projections and our forecasting for upcoming years, and hopefully present that back to you in the October work session. That's kind of our target. So, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
It's tiny.
Get your magnifier on. I need a magnifying glass to read it, but...
Well, I think I, I think I speak for the board, when we, we really do appreciate the amount of work that was, went into this document. Being a history major myself a long time ago, having the history of everything is really important. It helps us understand why, why we've done what we've done. And I think it is going to be a great tool for, for us as board members and other, you know, others constituents to understand, you know, where we're at, and how it's going to, how future needs might be impacted by some forces that we may not be able to control. And so, I appreciate that work, and I would encourage board members to keep that document handy. I know I, I will, and we definitely appreciate that.
Anybody? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. So we're going to do D but not E. All right, item D, Employee Handbook.
Move to approve the employee handbook for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Hold on, I just want to read one thing. Maybe. Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was reading.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Board member comments?
Boy, this is a quiet group tonight. We've, a lot of work has gone on, a lot of things going on, even though it's summer. I know Dr. Miller said that they shift gears, and I know that there's a lot of things that they're doing already to get ready for the school year. But I do hope that all of you have some time to take a little personal time and recharge because we all need to do that. So hopefully that happens next month or so. I'm talking to you too, Dave. Got a special spot for Dave because I know what he does. So take some time off, okay? Okay, important dates, one of them being the Hall of Fame Golf Tournament is on Friday, and several members of the staff I know are involved with that. MSBA Summer Summit is coming up this, well, I guess early next week. I will be attending that. So I look forward to bringing home some good information. There's a session on AI that I just can't wait for. But I'm going to go. Let's see, next Wednesday morning will be our special year, end-of-year board meeting to tie up budget. June 27th is the last day of summer school. And our next meeting and quarterly work session will be on July 17th.
Miscellaneous.
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in July, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues liable under section 610021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Matt Baker. Len Brott. Meredith Cole.
Yes.
John Carter.
Yes.
Bruce Whitezer.
Yes.
Nick Fasscos.
Yes.
Karli Bailey.
Yes. We are adjourned.